I'm going to call the April fifteenth council meeting before. As we get started, I'm going to try to enunciate better because my wife says I have to. She can't hear me at home, so. And clerk, please call the robe.
Council President Smith.
President.
Council President Green.
Here.
Councilmember Leita. Councilmember Middlebrook. Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Posey.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
We have a guest with Truth 97, Mr. Edward Boackle. Would you like to come down and leave the pledge? If you would, we'll need you to slow that microphone down and speak a little loud for us. My wife says I'm also hard of hearing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if I have an order, but Madam Park, could you please provide the invocation?
Heavenly Father, I thank you for helping the ones who were affected by the damaging winds and tornadoes over the weekend and bringing them peace throughout the healing process. I thank you also for this meeting and being able to virtually place leaders to the side on matters of the city. I thank you also for giving them guidance and help in how to be as do conscientious in the decision-making process. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
For those of you who do not recognize the young lady that stood up, Margie Hanley is retired, and this is our new city clerk, Wendy Dickerson. She comes to us from Cleveland, Virginia with fifteen years' experience as assistant city clerk. Now I'm open for a motion on the minute.
President, I move for approval of the minutes without reading.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposal nay, the ayes have it. Next, we're going to have some announcements, reports, recognitions. Dr. Murphy. Dr. Murphy, you're coming down. I understand you have some good news.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening. Thank you so much. It's always my honor to come and visit with you. Thank you for what you do for our schools. I had some really terrific notes, and I don't know where they are, so I'm going to just talk. How's that? Our school district recently went through advanced ed accreditation. As you know, it's important for our schools to stay accredited, and advanced ed is what used to be known as Southern Association of Colleges and Universities. The group came and visited with us on February third through the sixth. It was a five-member team, a very unbiased group, many of them not even from the state of Alabama, who visited with us to take a close look at the educational system in our school district. You might wonder what five people can do in three days. They can do amazing things because during the time they were with us, they conducted five hundred and nine interviews with parents, students, with teachers, with community stakeholders. They also completed fifty-five classroom observations while they were in the district, and they also examined just a plethora of evidence that our leadership team had put together for them. Prior to them coming to our school district, we had presented them with some survey information and other data, and again, while they were here, they were really focused on three things, and I want to share those with you. One is what's called leadership capacity, and there are actually eleven areas under leadership capacity. The team could evaluate us in terms of exceeds expectations, meets expectations, or that there are needs in those areas. And when I talk about leadership, I'm not talking about Kathy Murphy as the superintendent. I'm talking about the leaderships in our schools, our principals, our teacher leaders, our board, and out of all eleven of those standards, our school district exceeded expectations. They then looked at what's called the learning capacity domain, and again, in every area we either exceeded expectations or met expectations, and only one area did they ask us to focus on. And then the last domain that they looked at is a research resource capacity domain. And again, our school district either met or exceeded all of the expectations of the team. And the piece that I'm just excited to share with you is that the scores for the nation and internationally over a five-year period of time, that range of scores is seven hundred and seventy-eight, excuse me, let's get this right, two hundred and seventy-eight to two hundred and eighty-three is the range of scores, and our school district earned three hundred and fifty-nine points. We are twenty-seven percent higher than the highest average for both international and for state schools in the nation and throughout internationally, those advanced ed schools. So this is an awesome report. The team focused on how well our school district collaborates, not only with stakeholders but with the city, and so I just thought it was worthy to come to you and say that the team acknowledged our working relationship, they acknowledged our strategic plan and the collaboration, our focus on high expectations and high standards. And so, just excited to say to you that our school district is doing exceptionally well, and we're doing exceptionally well, not independent of you, but because of you and because of our other stakeholders, for our parents and for our community. And I just wanted to come and personally thank you and to present to our mayor, Bicato, a copy of our evaluation, which will give you much more detail than you'll ever want to know, but thank you for this privilege.
Same hand, piece of paper in here without having to.
I see that.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. All right, next, we're going to move a couple of things around. We've got one, one that had been omitted from the original agenda. I'm going to ask Mr. Murphy if we can move up the recommendation from the education committee so we can vote on the next appointee to the Hoover City Board of Education.
Absolutely. Yes, okay, all right. Yes, so we had approximately two applicants to apply for the next five-year term. One was incumbent, one was a due individual. Both are outstanding. They call a different understanding, knowledge-based, experience-based, in their own way. Our education committee met on last Thursday to have a public dialogue about these two applicants, and from that, we voted to recommend to the full council to reappoint Mr. Craig Kelly to a five-year term on the Hoover Board of Education.
I will consider that a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposal nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Kelly here tonight. I'll see you in the back. Stand up and say hello to everybody. And as we talked about, or was talked about last Thursday, both candidates were extremely qualified, and the other gentleman, a doctor, I believe, out of state. I hope that he wants to avail himself. Are you here tonight, sir? I hope he avails himself to other opportunities here in Hoover, maybe even next year, for consideration for the same position. Now, we're going to move to the beautification board. They have some recognitions that they would like to make.
It is with great pleasure that the beautification board is here this evening to introduce to you the winners of the 2019 litter poster contest that we hold annually in conjunction with Al Pals, People Against the Littered State. The theme this year was "Let's Go Green" in 2019, and these students were selected from their schools, and then we had all the school winners and a team of judges made up of Hoover Beautification Board members and members of the Clean Hoover Initiative to judge and come up with our three winners. Their posters will now go to the state to be judged at the end of the month amongst all the posters winners from around the state. So I'm proud to introduce to you tonight, our third-place winner is Adriana Britt. Adriana. Adriana is a fifth grader at River Chase Elementary. She's here this evening with her parents, Laura and Richard Britt, and her art teacher, Ms. Eric Patterson, and her administrators, Dr. Alice Turney and Ms. Jumpkin. Our second-place winner is also from River Chase. He's also a fifth grader. And his name is Faison Igbal, and he is here with his parents, Mir and Serene, and also the art teacher and his administrators. Our first-place winner is from Gwen Elementary. If you'll hold your post. Sophie Bowman, she is also a fifth grader. Her parents, Hank and Debbie Bowman, are here, and her teacher is Ms. Ashley Dark. I haven't met her, so I'm not sure if she's here. And her administrator is Dr. Kimberly White. Really want to thank these students for the hard work. This is extra that they do, and I really appreciate the hard work they put into it. One of the criteria is that they not only have a beautiful poster, but they have information and tips on how to make our world a more beautiful place and how to make Alabama green in 2019, and they all did a great job of meeting that criteria. So we wish them good luck.
Mayor, would you like to do a picture collectively or one at a time? I would think so. Maybe they would like to come down as well. And Mr. Posey, city public information officer, would be happy to use your camera and ours. Let's start with the third place. And then if the other two would move off just a hair. How about second place? Hand your camera. Now, for those of you that don't know, you can go home tonight and watch yourself on YouTube. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other reports or announcements this time before we, do you have an employee recognition before we get into the proclamations?
Well, this is a great part of our agenda where we get to recognize those that have served our city for many, many years, and we have four people here tonight that we'd like to recognize, and our first one is Larry Boackle, who has twenty years. Larry's got his wife Tommy Anne and son Edward, who did our pledge force. Y'all stand up here just for a second. Let me just say Larry's just a great individual, just a fine man, a wonderful family man. He's been on our fire department since nineteen ninety-nine and came here from Birmingham. Well, I think he was down there for five years. Five years downtown, so he came over with a good bit of experience. He's working out in Greystone now, but just does an outstanding job. He's an individual that you give a job to him to do, and he takes care of it, and does a wonderful job at that, and just the kind of folks that you want working in your city and that you want on your fire department. That's this guy right here. And something that a lot of people don't know about, if you like Lebanese food, this is the man. He can do it. Best kid here in town, right? But he has twenty years with us, and we are so grateful for your service, Larry, and we would like to offer him this pink and get a little picture. Next, I'd like Kevin Jordan and his wife Beth and son Dylan. Come on up. Kevin also has. So Kevin's been, started with the park and recreation department as a groundskeeper in nineteen ninety-nine, and was promoted to full-time labor in ninety-nine, and then went on to labor two in oh-five, and did such a great job operating our equipment, which is very, very important, to be able to do that and to do it safely and efficiently. He was promoted to equipment operator in twenty, two thousand and seven, and then senior operator in twenty fourteen. Our parks and recreation, I think, if you look at all of our parks and our facilities, they speak for themselves, and it's because of individuals like Kevin that really pour their hearts and soul and do just a great job making sure that the parks look great, our ball fields are ready, and just, and they're working with all the events that we have that take place. It's so, it's huge demand put on your entire staff, but we appreciate all that you do and all the years of service that you give to the city of Hoover. We're grateful to you.
For twenty-five years of service, we have Charles Chuck Cuffey. Chuck, come up.
Chuck started in nineteen ninety-four as a groundskeeper for us and became full-time in two thousand, and today he's a public works supervisor. Again, if you look at our city, all across our city, it's a clean, well-kept, manicured city. Our parks are outstanding, and facilities are outstanding, and one thing about Chuck, he's just a great leader and someone that his supervisors know if they can turn to him, give him a job, and it's going to be a job well done. And he's performed outstanding for us for these twenty-five years. Appreciate all the service that you give to us, and I just thank you for making time and letting us come by and letting us bring you out to recognize your great service. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's hard to fathom as young as he and I both look, but he was in charge of Chase Mountain Ballpark when my thirty-two-year-old son was playing Little League. So he has been an important person in this city for a very long.
Twenty-five years. Absolutely. Both of our kids played in this city.
You ready?
And then we have one more. I think this is the first person we've recognized of building inspections since I've been here, and that'd be Wade Lambone. He's got his daughter Jessica and granddaughter Hannah. Y'all come up as well. Wade is an inspector, started here in nineteen ninety-four as a building inspector, and today he is chief building inspector and has been since nineteen ninety-nine. What an important job building inspections is to our city. These are the folks that go out and make sure that the buildings meet the code. They're the ones that have to stand toe-to-toe with some folks that might get a little honorary over and down then and may not agree with how they've interpreted the code, but it's a tough job, and their job is to make sure that the buildings that we walk into each and every day are safe on the day they open, but also safe a hundred years from now. And that's the type of job that Wade does. He's a great, I've known him a long time, worked alongside him, of course, the fire department, we had a lot of interaction. It's just, he's a smiling, as you can see, just a good-natured fellow and does a wonderful job for us, and he does make sure that our city is safe, and he knows the code, so don't try and wrestle him on that. Thank you so much for all of your service. Okay, and then moving on to, we have two proclamations I'd like for Director Linda Moore, Allison Richter, Colin Nelson, Beth Stanley, and Doug Glover. Come up. Of course, we have a proclamation. This is National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, and maybe not the most important department in the city, they're way on up there. These are the folks that you talk to when there's a crisis at your home or your business, and boy, what a great job they do. Fully worthy of this proclamation that we're going to have our city attorney read right now.
They also are the only ones that tell police where to go and have the police march.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time and require police, fire, or emergency medical services, whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to protection of life, preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone Hoover Emergency Communications Center, whereas public safety telecommunicators are first and most critical contact our citizens have in emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Hoover Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore, I, Frank Bicato, mayor of the city of Hoover, do hereby declare the week of April fourteenth through April twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Hoover in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism deepred city and citizen said.
Linda, how many calls would y'all get? Linda, how many calls would y'all get on a state red?
Probably about forty.
Forty calls for one incident. They have to go through, that's just one type of call. It's amazing what they do.
Cell phones.
Yeah, because of cell phones, and you have to answer each one and make sure that it. that, you know, that they're actually reporting that, so they do a wonderful job, and we're grateful to them.
Linda, do you remember how many calls for service you had last year in total?
Uh, 100, 580,000, 200,000 or something.
And 2.8 million radio packages.
All right, Mr. Mayor. And we have, with us, folks from the Birmingham-Jefferson Transit Authority. Their Chair Board, Theodore Smith, and Chief of Staff, Ms. Valerie Rivers, and Director of Customer Care and Marketing, Ms. Myrna Pittman, come up, if you would. How are y'all doing at the time? So we have a great relationship with our transit board, and we appreciate what they do and provide a great service to our citizens, and we have a route that runs along 280 and one in 31 and Warner Road, and we're one of the busier services, actually, that, one of the busiest, a lot of the busiest stops in their system come through and stop in Hoover, Alabama, so we appreciate how y'all take care of us, and we want to continue that great relationship with you. And it is actually a national get-on-board day in Hoover, and we're here to celebrate a proclamation.
Whereas the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority, DJCPA, is a public entity established by the Alabama Legislature to provide mass public transportation in Jefferson County, Alabama. Whereas April 25th, 2019, marks National Get-On-Board Day. Today, they've encouraged people to ride public transportation, save money, protect the environment, and improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whereas free rides will be offered to all customers on April 25th, 2019, celebration of National Get-On-Board Day. Whereas public transportation is a $71 billion industry that directly employs 420,000 people and supports millions of private sector jobs. Whereas for every $1 invested in public transportation, $4 is generated in economic returns. Whereas 87% of public transit trips directly impact the economy by connecting people to jobs or retail and entertainment venues. Now therefore, be resolved that Alabama declares that public transportation helps people save money, save money, helps the environment, and improves America's quality of life. And also be resolved that where public transportation goes, communities grow and prosper. Now therefore, I, Frank DiVercato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2019, as National Get-On-Board Day in our city, and will join with the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority and other, other public transportation agencies across the country, and participate in National Get-On-Board Day by showcasing benefits and building support for public transportation on April 25th, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any other reports?
All right, next, we're gonna turn to our consent agenda. Mr. Corley gets started on these. There, any member of the council needs any of one of these items pulled from the audience. Mr. Corley, if you please, go over our consenting agenda.
Item 9 is Resolution 5973-19 for business or planning, date 002. This resolution accepts bid in the amount of orders 11,869 dollars. 121,000, 869 dollars, 53,000. Ordinance Food Service and Correctional Facility Food and Beverage Contract. Resolution further authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary through the agreement. Item 10, Resolution Number 5974-19, authorizes the mayor, DiVercato, to enter into any and all documents necessary to enter an agreement with South Lake Capital LLC for replacement copy or from the police department. Item 11 is Resolution 5975-19, commensurate budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019, as shared on today. Item 12, Resolution 5976-19, clears the two sitting on the items listed in the resolution as surplus, and all the rest of them to be disposed of by sale, as is at a public auction, or disposed of by donation. Item 13, Resolution 5977-19, rescinds Resolution 5907-18 passed on November 18th, 2018, vacated certain properties described in the resolution. This precision is occurring at the request of the property owners who originally requested the vacation. Resolution Number 5978-19 approves and sends to a vacation of property described in the resolution at the request of Mr. Paul Carruthers, the property owner, confiding the property would be vacated. Item Number 15, approves ABC application for the L L C property's best, and item 15 approves paper files.
Mr. President, I move for approval of all of these single 10 items.
Second.
Motion in second. For those of you not familiar with our consent agenda, it's gone over a link on our Thursday work session, and it's really considered housekeeping in nature. And unless a member or a member of the audience seeks to read it in further discussion, then we just vote them as one. I have a motion in the second. I'll, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we're gonna move on to our regular order. We're gonna have the second reading of Ordinance 19-2424, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance provides for levying municipal taxes to the tax year beginning October 1st, 2019. These taxes shall be assessed and collected as usual by the tax assessors and collectors of Jefferson Shelby County.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 19-2424.
Second.
Motion in second. This is not any new taxation. These are basically the city tax structures that roll from year to year, and it takes place every year about this time. Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing, none, now the clerk, please, go ahead.
Doctor, over.
Aye.
Doctor, Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Busy.
Aye.
Mr. Chop.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Siski.
Murphy, you almost got promoted. Or she got demoted, I don't know. Item 18, we're gonna start with a public hearing. Consider the request of Mr. Joseph Parsley Carlson Consulting Engineers for conditional use to, for the approval to allow a retail strip shopping center to be located at 1539 and 1541 Montgomery Highway. This property is owned, is owned by Orange Hoover 31 LLC, and it's owned C2, Community Business District, and C3, General Business District. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak for or against this particular one, is the applicant here tonight? Would you care to explain to us what you're doing? I'll leave your name and address.
My name's Don Pfizer, Representative Hoover, sorry, Orange Hoover 31 LLC, 1200 Corporate Drive, Suite 50, of Birmingham, Alabama. So, the property that we're talking about is the Mr. Transmission property that is between US 31 and Warner Road, and also the old Mexico Lenny Co. restaurant that burned last July. So what we are proposing is a retail strip center, probably 50,000 square feet. Property is pretty limited in depth, but we've worked through the necessary variances to the fore with the design we put in front of you today, and asking for your ultimate issue of this approval for the addition of that. If you're to answer any questions that you all may have, also to fill y'all in, we'll have with the DOT and have their approval on, structural approval for the closing of some curb cuts out there on 31, and also the inclusion of a left-hand, dedicated left-hand turn lane at the light, as you're saying, south on 31. That'll be part of our project also.
This property, one time, had been, uh, gonna have, you know, the same Orange United Sports Training Facility. Were you involved at that point?
We were, yes, and it's one of our...
And you just decided to change your business model?
With the, with the issues on the property, from the site standpoint, development standpoint, what the requirements were, decided to move in that direction.
How many storefronts do you expect to have?
15,000 square feet. It's really based on what the tenant needs are, and it can be the work from three to five.
Questions from the council?
I just have one particular. I understand the traffic, I want their signal. Couple of the interests right there. I know in the past, it wasn't a restriction per se, only right-hand turn lane out.
South end, what does that four, uh?
Orders on the poncho.
Any questions from the audience? Scan anything from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Sir, this is approved. You have approximately time on construction.
We have current work duties, you're designing the wall to support the work behind it, so we would hope that later this year we'll be able to.
Thank you.
Civil Engineer Lance O'Leary, 2217, 10th Court South, Birmingham 35205. This is directly behind the Walgreens at Alden Highway 150, and, uh, road to, uh, Stacy Drive. Get the name of the road. Rossbridge Street, anyway. What we're at, what we have is a three-story self-storage building and retail shops off front Highway 150. We're, don't have any new curb cuts. We have access off, there's joint-use access ingress easement that runs behind Walgreens that we'll use, and also off Rossbridge Parkway. If you'd like to answer any questions, y'all might.
One of the properties, the one on the side of Ryan.
Below is, is Highway 150 drive.
No, sir, and the, it looks like their address is assigned to 12345. Parcels, the same color as yours. That's right there.
Oh, those are the retail shops, I'm sorry.
Those existing.
Those are, those are, those are proposed.
You're gonna construct those as well?
Yes, sir. I thought I said that, sorry.
Are all the properties gonna be sprinkled?
They don't have to meet the power codes.
Yes, sir.
So they don't have to sprinkle them?
No, well, I know the self-storage, well, it's just three stories, I'm not sure about the, they'll be sprinkled if they have to.
Questions from the council?
Yeah.
Looking at it, you have, you have some anticipations of runoff, and where would your detention pond be?
It would be, if you see, here, it's hard to see, I think. It would be, it would be to the rear of the building.
Those trees that would be in the detention pond as well?
Well, that's the landscape, architects. There would be detention trees in the detention pond, they'd be around the outside. We've not done a design drawings on it, but these are schematic, and we would have to do design drawings, assuming this is approved.
This is not a pretty sound, correct?
No, it's, it's conditionally.
So let's talk a little bit about traffic. We, this area just went through a facelift, if you will, above, uh, a traffic burden prior to the 150, uh, extension, and also two left-hand turn lanes from Rossbridge on to, uh, 150. Any traffic analysis has been done with that?
What I was gonna say is, self-storage building really doesn't generate a huge amount of traffic. The retail shops would be, they're, sorry. Retail shops, their ingresses would be mostly off Highway 150. It doesn't, but you...
Yeah, so, so I guess, and I drive it every day, and I'm, I'm just imagining, because when the, uh, uh, barrier lane in the middle has been carved out to add two deceleration points, right, and I'm just talking jargony right now, but it, it, it prevents a lot of sight from different directions off of, uh, onto Rossbridge. Adding, my opinion, without a study, any left-hand turn lane on to, that area's gonna be problematic. Also, I mean, and I'll have a study to kind of look, to tell me, they have something, they're gonna tell me that I'm putting, uh, I'm putting another load on it that causes more problematic problems. That's, that's what is a concern for me when I see each and every day, and that's just eyeballing it, right? Off of, coming out of Walgreens as well, too, on 150. But a lot of, uh, rigs that's coming down that road is also a concern with me, because it doesn't give enough lead time for folks to see and turn off. So I'm just saying, from that standpoint, it's a, it's a concern with me on that end when it comes to the traffic.
We've not done a traffic study. There's an existing curb cut that that's what we're gonna use. It's there, behind, behind Walgreens. And people returning right, go into the place, and to me, using common sense, they'll come out of the traffic light and turn right or left.
Yeah, common sense don't work when you bind a wheel sometimes. So, so I'm more so on the safe side, safety factor.
I understand what you're saying, and if, if that's the will of the council, we can do a traffic study.
No, it's just my, my...
Well, I think that, Mr. President, I think that's a legitimate question, Mr. Murphy. I mean, there was some discussion about identifying zoning, but I think that's, considering so much work has been done there recently, is that, is that within the realm of something you wanted to do? If we need to, we can. I mean, here's, here's my view on it. The driveway's there. Traffic study's gonna show people coming in and out, and number, the number of trips that are gonna be generated by it. Now, how people choose to come in and out, there's no way a traffic study can predict that, they're gonna go, uh, something that doesn't really make a lot of sense, it's unsafe. So I, I can't, I can't speak to that now.
In those traffic studies, that they also look at, uh, uh, safety as well, sight revision, so not just the count that's really...
But my point to that is, those driveways are there, and they're gonna be used whether we build anything back there or not. Something's gonna go back there, and so whether it's our facility or something else, those driveways will be used. If it wasn't, it could, we didn't have to have conditional use, if we just built something back there, we wouldn't be here. The conditional use is, is, is because of the self-storage, not, not because of the retail.
Right, so let me just end on this, Tim, I don't know if I put you on the spot here, just digest what I'm saying. I just got some concerns. It's a, it's a rough area already. We've already, people getting used to coming down that hill. There's a lot going on right there. And anytime you add another load in an area like that, when it's, uh, I think Deer Valley is still on the top, or the largest elementary school in the school system, even with the rezoning, it just brings some major concern my way. Nothing directly to you, I just, I'm, I'm consistent.
My, my mom lives at the Oaks, so I'm very familiar with this road. I, I drive it weekly.
So I just wanna add that to the notes.
Question I have, sir. Up at the top of your picture, is that an entrance in the backside of Walgreens? You had made mention of, no, sir, up top.
This, this right here?
Yes, sir.
No, sir, that is access to this property right here, that's part of...
From where?
Sorry?
From where?
Off this drive, we're gonna, there's a, if you go to look at the record map, there's actually an access easement, this lot right here, this lot one, that's their access.
You had mentioned, if I recall, being able to have access, they can get to Rossbridge Parkway.
That's right, they, they can come around...
Where is the entrance to Walgreens?
It's, uh, it's not shown on this, it's, it's right... It's, uh, it's not shown on this, it's, it's right, right, right out.
Top right hand?
Yes, yes.
All right, sir.
Driveway comes around like that.
That driveway, is that a dedicated road, is it an alleyway?
They're, they're, they're all private driveways with ingress, egress across.
Who owns, who owns that, uh, private driveway?
Walgreens owns this, actually, this driveway that's behind Walgreens is on our property, and Walgreens uses that as their drive.
Okay.
That's, this, this, there's, there's access easements across the whole substance.
Okay, well, see, that was gonna be one of my questions, whether or not, if it was a Walgreens, you already have, uh, access.
Those, those access easements are all the question, that's how.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, anything from the audience?
Mr. President, I have.
Yes, sir.
Um, the retail shops.
Come on down, sir, and hang on.
How many retail shops are you anticipating there?
Five, I'm sorry.
And, will those be, uh, can those be combined?
Well, they would be, there's enough room for five tenants, it might be four, it might be six.
Won't be one.
It, it could be one, it, it.
Could be a Dollar General or something.
No, sir, it won't be a Dollar General, I don't think. It could be anything that's legal, it's retail.
It could.
It could be anything.
And, uh, is, the front of the retail's gonna be facing the storage, so?
That's right, that's right, and, and the.
One gives you this a major thoroughfare into Hoover.
That's right.
You're gonna be looking at the backside of this building.
We, we've already been for the plan and commission, there'll be seventy-five percent brick, there'll be, you know, nice addition, just like anything else in Hoover.
Record, I think it was eighty percent.
Maybe it was eighty percent, but there, we've got some schematic drawings, you'd like to see.
Do you have, have you spoken to any possible tenants, it doesn't look like you have any real, uh, viewability from any roadway or.
Well, you have good vision, you have good vision from, from Highway one fifty.
Highway one fifty?
Yes, sir.
But, you indicated that the Walgreens drive was between those buildings and the back of Walgreens.
Well, we got the picture that shows, shows, Google them out. That existing driveway is, is the access we'll have right there, and so if you come down one fifty, you'll, you'll see those shops, they'll be right there at.
They won't be under the transmission line?
No, sir, no, that's the old, that's, that's where the new bridge is, that's where the new bridge is, that's the old, that's the old single lane bridge off to the left, that where it says John Hawkins Parkway, that's where the new bridge comes across.
Okay, very good, so in the heavily wooded area would be, or towards the back of that, backing up to the railroad would be those five or six shops.
No, sir, they'll be right there off that driveway that comes off Walgreens.
Okay, I thought those were behind the storage unit.
This driveway right here is that driveway right behind Walgreens.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, so if you come down one fifty, you'll have great sidelines for the whole property.
Any other questions from the council? That one gentleman, name of the address, please, sir?
Stan Marks, five two seven four Cottage Lane, had a few questions, how many, how many feet tall will the storage facility be, and how many square feet per floor?
Uh, they'll be three stories tall, excuse me, they'll be three stories tall, um, actually, I'm not sure how many is per, per square foot, and how many feet per building, probably twelve, so probably be thirty-six, thirty-eight feet high, something like that, it, it might be a little bit higher, but I would think much.
So, as you're, as you're coming down, uh, probably one fifty from.
Please give us your name.
I'm sorry, Stan Marks, five two seven four Cottage Lane, that's okay.
As I, as Mr. says, I have some time.
Uh, the, uh, so as you're coming down, uh, probably one fifty, coming from Shades Crest, you'll pass the Y on the left, and then you'll approach this project on the right, and the building, we're looking at forty feet or higher, the building is gonna look probably, I'm gonna guess here, it's just a guess, but it's gonna probably look like about the size of a current Y N C A, which used to be a Bruno's, it's gonna be a big building, I mean, it's gonna, and you're, it's going to, you're gonna have a church that's going next door, you're gonna have, you've got, you know, five hundred and, a little over five hundred homes in the Deer Valley community.
Let's ask Mr. West, I want to know, what is the cap on three stories in the city? Is that a Mac question?
Yes.
Mr. Mac. What is the cap on three stories?
So, at present, in the C two district, uh, the structural height limitation is sixty feet.
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet in general.
Six stories, three stories, is there a cap on the number of feet per floor?
Uh, that is not provided for room zoning.
Aight, thank you, sir. Thought we were.
Okay, so we're looking at a large, we're looking at a potentially large facility, uh, disrupting an area where you'll have a church next door, and over five hundred homes in the neighborhood, and I think, you know, we just wanted to try to protect the, the integrity of the Rossbridge area, this is a great community, and, you know, I mean, I'm, like I said, not opposed to something going in here, but I think, you know, we need to find something that's reflective of the, you know, the adjoining community and the, and the home values, um, these submittals, uh, provided at P and Z, um, I believe we're missing sidewalks and crosswalks, have those been added to your?
Wait, or, sorry, you need to speak to the council.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, were the, have the sidewalks and crosswalks been added into the proposal since it, since it's been through P and Z?
Martin.
Uh, to date, I have not seen an updated drawing with those in place.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, uh, at the, at P and Z, with Mr. Parrish, is he, is he here, is Mr. Parrish in the developer?
Uh, stand up in the back.
Okay, um, one of my concerns, that was, that came up a few minutes ago, was about being able to take the retail section, which has, I believe shows five parcels on there now, and condense them down into one, and again, as I asked at P and Z, and I'll ask you that again tonight, uh, Mr. Parrish, are you willing to, to put in, into the agreement that the, the parcels cannot be condensed into more than, say, two for the, for the size of the project, Mr. Parrish, or to, to, to the council?
You know, one thing that would concern me is, uh, whether you have six or whether you have one, uh, the business community's gonna try to derive as much patronage as possible, uh, so if you have one, uh, they're gonna hope to get the value of six, so I don't know, that could really be, uh, a point before the council when it comes to this.
Again, my concern is that we will, you know, there is no intention maybe to put a dollar store, and I can't speak, you know, you know, verify what they're saying, but my, my, I guess my concern is that's what we'll end up, is with something, a dollar store that is some processed foods and just becomes something else that great tenants like Sprouts and Publix and Targets just have to continue to try to, you know, compete against, and, and I just don't think that type store is reflective of what we want to, in this area, and I guess the last thing, we, and we've, uh, we've talked a little about the, uh, the schematics presented, um, and I know that at P and Z, uh, I believe it was changed to an eighty percent brick or facade, or whatever the, the terminology was used, and I guess I just would like to see that there's some type of, uh, process to, to validate that that's what it's going to do, but, you know, and, and hopefully that we will encourage a look to be maybe a Rossbridge station that will be somewhat bookend and mirror the, you know, the, the, the construction down at Rossbridge, which is a craftsman look with a darker brick, and the schematics presented don't do that, in light of that, um, I would ask that the council deny this request, and I think we need to, I think Councilman Murphy's, uh, suggestion about the traffic study is important, and I believe we have other concerns that, uh, that the, you know, that possibly some of the drawings have not been updated since P and Z, and so my, my suggestion would be that the council, uh, you know, deny this particular application, thank you.
Mr. Martin, um, if this were passed tonight, what other opportunity would the city have to be involved when it comes to architectural design or the look of a building? Is there another opportunity, or is this it?
Uh, let's see, we would, of course, have our, our building plans go through the, uh, building department, as far as architectural style is concerned, uh, we have the eighty percent brick components that's being suggested as a condition, uh, but that's really all we have as far as architectural style.
Well, I remember, there've been a number of properties, probably the biggest one, uh, along, I believe, left on Alabama, was Walmart on one fifty, they wanted the standard two-tone blue, and, uh, and the city wanted brick, had we not interjected at the time that we did, probably would've had two-tone blue, oh, so I guess I'm asking, is this the last bite of the apple, if we wanted to see something like that?
I would say so.
Aight, thank you, anything else from the audience? Chair's open for motion.
Mr. President, I move that we continue this to our next meeting.
Second. Have a motion to continue to the next regular meeting. With that being stated, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, you guys have it, you've got two weeks, it's like to, uh, try to work on this. Sir?
That, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it may take, if we do a traffic study, it may take longer than two weeks.
Well, you can ask for longer than that.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is, is, 'cause I'm not a traffic engineer, we'd have to hire a consultant, but what, what, I, I don't know what the timeframe would be on that.
You can make it as long as you would like, but, uh.
I mean.
Before you spend a bunch of money on other things, let's try to answer the questions that are on the table, like.
Well, we're willing to, we're ready.
Like the sidewalks and things like that, about architectural.
Well, no, we've already said we'll do eighty percent brick, that'll be part of the, the.
Yeah, what color brick, uh, is it the top eighty percent or the lower eighty percent of this? Uh, Walmart in Hoover.
I, I mean, I guess, are you wanting elevations that will be, you want design drawings that will be, I, I'm just asking the question to make sure I understand what, what you wanna see.
I can't speak to the other members, but I would like to see some, some drawings of what the facility would look like along with the retail.
That's what I'm saying, you're asking for elevations, the, the pretty detailed elevations that would be.
Well, I don't know about elevation, I'm.
Well, no, I was gonna say the side view of the building.
Yeah, Mr. President, yes, that's what, generally, when folks present, we get some elevation views to see.
Well, we, we, we've gave some schematic ones, but, I mean, what you want is a design draw, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what y'all are asking, to say.
How about, how about letting the council get with Mr. Martin and make a fair suit?
Okay.
And then Mr. Martin can communicate.
That'd be great.
Right.
Mr. President, for the record, I mean, my main concern is what Mr. Murphy brought up, is that is, there was a lot of discussion of funding zoning about the traffic aspect, that's a critical corner, and you got different ingress egress, I think we need to know a little bit more about what the.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I think this is gonna take longer than two weeks, is my, 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 my sense.
If that's, if you're gonna do.
But I don't know how long it's gonna take.
Just report back to Mr. Martin.
I mean, I mean, I guess my asking, can we just continue until we can come up with the evidence?
How about continue to the calling chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, it's still before us, so you can rescind your previous vote and vote and and move to the calling chair.
Can we do that on one motion? Mr. President, I would move that we rescind the prior motion and continue to face to the calling chair.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is that?
Make sure that, once he does come back to everything, that we do not contradict or mention that.
Oh, you will.
Yes, ma'am.
You'll have time. Okay, fair enough?
No, it's fair, I, that's, that's, that's excellent, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, you guys have it, all right, item twenty is ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four. Yes, sir, oh, yes, I promise. Yeah, um, uh, Dr. Middlebrook has a family, she's in there, uh, and because of that, I have promised to bring up something that he had requested, he may have to leave, so let's, let's move up, uh, item twenty-two, Dr. Middlebrook. Uh, it's gonna be resolution fifty-nine seventy-nine nineteen, uh, let's first have Mr. Corley read the resolution, and Dr. Middlebrook will explain.
This resolution approves support for House Bill forty-one, including the two thousand nineteen regular session of legislature to storage.
Most of them approve resolution fifty-nine seventy-nine dash nineteen.
Second, we have a motion and a second, Dr. Middlebrook.
Uh, basically, there's a, uh, House Bill forty-one that has already passed through the House, and is now in the Senate Judiciary Committee, uh, where it has stalled somewhat, uh, but I have spoken to the Senator Ward and Senator Wagner, uh, saying that they do believe it will get pushed out, uh, fairly quickly, and it gets a call for a vote, uh, this bill basically gives the state, uh, regulation over alternative nicotine products other known, otherwise known as e-cigarettes and vaping.
And that would include jewels?
That would include jewels.
That includes products?
This, anything that is considered vaping or e-cigarettes, which include annuals, when they, uh, first came to the state, they were very wise in getting it labeled alternative nicotine, therefore it didn't fall under the, uh, Alamo Act of laws, uh, so this basically gives the state regulatory measures.
All right, any other comments or questions from the council, and from the audience? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, you guys have it, uh, this, uh, resolution will be shared with members of both the House and the, uh, Senate.
Take this, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, um, next, ordinance nineteen dash two four two two, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends various sections of the zoning ordinance Hoover, is set forth in Appendix One of the District Code of the City of Hoover, Alabama, regarding P U D application timelines, the city's planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on March eleventh, two thousand nineteen, and recommended this amendment to the city council for Dr.
President, I move to Doc's ordinance number nineteen dash two four two two.
Second. All right, is this the second reading, um, just in, real quick, uh, Mike, do you wanna explain to everyone present exactly what this accomplishes and why?
Sure thing, Mr. Chair, uh, the, the amendment is before you this evening for second reading is to essentially expand the timeline, we have a new plan unit development application coming for us, uh, as you know, uh, plan unit developments, uh, that's our tool for allowing for flexibility in our zoning, to be creative with, uh, with our developments, and, um, in some cases, those can get rather lengthy, and so the, uh, the timeline, uh, if amended, would permit for, uh, first, a pre-application meeting between the, uh, developer and city staff, uh, to go over the draft, uh, would also include, at the first available planning commission meeting, a presentation and information-only discussion, uh, to go over the draft and plan unit development, and then a following month, until the next planning commission meeting, uh, to work out any and all comments that, uh, that may have come up. that may have come up in the previous. So in essence, it's to expand the timeline one month to allow for us to fully go through and make sure both parties, the developer and the city, are well-versed with planning unit development being proposed, as well as our planning commission.
Very good. This is a second reading. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'm perfectly scalded. Here. I mean, I'm sorry. Not that right, someday I'll propose that. Aye.
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 Aye, and if you please let the record show that Dr. Middlebrook has had some family issues to attend to. Next, item twenty-three is resolution fifty-nine eighty nineteen. Mr. Corley. I've got it, item twenty-three.
Sir, this is a resolution in opposition to proposed legislation before the Alabama Legislature sent it, two sixty.
Motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve resolution number fifty-nine eighty-eight nineteen.
Second. I've got a motion, second. Mr. Shaw, you brought this to the table, and I know it's time-sensitive, just while we added it tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate everybody's letting us introduce the last minute like this. The reason is, is as you all know, last summer, we worked very hard, the city staff, legal staff, and the council worked very hard to pass a small cell ordinance that allows telecom companies to put small cell towers in our city. That ordinance has been really successful and has been widely recognized as the standard for the state. We have over, that's why we, over thirty by now, or?
Thirty-five.
All right, so we're at thirty-five approved applications for these towers. And so the industry really likes it, it's working well from an aesthetic perspective. We haven't any issues with getting what we need to. So it's a very good ordinance, and a particular industry representative dropped a bill in the legislature to take all of that power to regulate these small cell towers away from all municipalities. And so many cities have passed resolutions opposing this, they dropped it kind of last minute. They're gonna be possibly looking at it this week. So this is a resolution saying, hey, we wanna maintain that local control, we do a good job at it, and we wanna keep it healthy.
Would the state still require the cities to process the applications?
I think so, it just pretty much takes away any of our ability to set the requirements and the fees and everything, and they can put any kind of poll they want in there, they can do whatever they want to, and pretty much we have to approve it.
Takes away our control over city easements and right-of-ways?
Yeah, essentially takes our control of right-of-way, the longer right-of-way people on the way.
They could put poles wherever and put as many devices as they wanted.
There's, I think there's some restrictions there, but we can, we can regulate our right-of-way the way we need to and we would want to.
Any questions from the council? From the audience? Elliot, something? Okay, oh, she's on her, okay. She'll come and down. No questions, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, the opposed nay, the ayes have it. This, too, will be sent to Montgomery to help the legislature understand our... Next, we have a plethora of first readings. I know probably some of y'all wanna get to our comments and questions section as quickly as possible, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Corley to try to do all this in two breaths. Maybe you get that auctioneer on denim and dining on Friday.
First reading of ordinance nineteen twenty-three point five, pre-zoned property located on forty-two seventy-three South City Express Road, owned by Republican investor Hoover C. Two, community district allowed by Alabama Code, section eleven fifty-two eighty-five, and second reading of this ordinance in consideration for adoption will be held on May sixth, two thousand and fifteen. That will also come with a public hearing. Will be a public hearing to request a, to consider the request of Mr. Park's ties in relation to additional use approval for hosting predictive and private events, such as reception, lack of payment, slash, to be helping their new coffee shop, Wild Rose Cafe, located at five eighty-five City Express Road, on Allen's property owner, Hoover C. Two. Also, we'll have ordinance number nineteen twenty-four point six. Virginia Bonds, agreed. It was pre-zoned property located on twenty-sixteen Sherman Road, as requested by Virginia Bonds, executive director, headlin, mayor of the state, Hoover C. One, is led by Alabama Code, section eleven fifty-eighty-five, second reading on May sixth, two thousand and fifteen. Ordinance number nineteen twenty-four point seven, pre-zoned property located on twenty-two fifty-three Chapel Hill Road, owned by the state Hoover, Hoover R. One, second family district, second reading in consideration will be on May sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Twenty-eight, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-four point eight, pre-zoned property located on twenty-three eighty-four, Barley Road, owned by the state Hoover, Hoover R. One, second reading in consideration for adoption on May sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Then ordinance number nineteen twenty-four point nine, pre-zoned property located on forty-seven sixty-four Wine Ridge Land, as requested by Mr. Michael Clay, Hoover R. One, second family district, second reading of this ordinance in consideration for adoption will be held on May sixth, two thousand and nineteen. First reading of ordinance number nineteen twenty-four thirty, this ordinance pre-zones, property located on eight fifty-three Willow Oak Drive, formerly River Chasements, will own by the state Hoover, Hoover R. One, second family district, second reading in consideration for adoption will be held on May sixth, two thousand and nineteen. First reading of ordinance number nineteen twenty-four thirty-one, this ordinance pre-zones, property located adjacent to forty-nine twenty-nine, Bushett Drive, Hoover E. Two, single family in the state district, second reading of this ordinance in consideration for adoption will be held on May sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
All right, were any of the applicants here tonight that anticipated a presentation or a first reading? All right, seeing none, we have satisfied those. We are now to the comments and questions period. I know Mr. Green probably would like to start off.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me, if there's also a public hearing to consider, request of additional use for Hoover Technical Career Center, we've got eight minutes to go, so it'll be a public hearing.
That's why I let you do this, don't make thunderpines across the...
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. As I stated at the last Public Works Committee meeting, I have serious concerns about our police and fire responders not being able to get to Hoover High, Trace Crossing Elementary, and Bumpus Middle Schools if an emergency or crisis situation develops during peak traffic times. In my opinion, this has become an increasingly dangerous situation with potential for tragic repercussions. I certainly understand citizens' opposition to the optimum road proposals presented thus far and share their reservations about increased traffic through their neighborhoods. That being said, I know without a shadow of a doubt that we must find a way for emergency services to get to these three schools despite any traffic gridlock. I would like the city to explore the possibility of constructing an emergency services-only gated access road that will connect Highway one fifty to Buccaneer Drive. This road would not be open to the public. This is a safety issue that I believe must be addressed as soon as possible. To help alleviate some of the problems caused by increasing traffic demands on Stadium Trace Parkway, I would also like to recommend that the city explore the possibility of adding additional lanes to this heavily-traveled road, at least a running lane, preferably further. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Any other comments or questions from the council on any topic?
I would, I don't know if you've had a chance to read the latest issue of Hoover Magazine, but there's a nice write-up on our Arts Council in there, talking about the direction we have for the future and talking about the shows that will be, the gallery on Father's Day weekend. So if you have a chance to check that out, please do.
Yeah, I gotta check. Anything else from the council? All right, anyone from the mayor, just, do you have anything?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to report on our hazardous material waste day that occurred. Saturday, it tremendous success, and Tommy Daniels and the force, thank you for what you and your group did. Just yeoman's work Saturday, fifteen hundred cars went through in four hours, and it was, it was like a symphony when you got there. It was a fine-tuned machine, and people were delivering and dropping off everything from televisions to tires to mercury to Roundup. I mean, if you, if it was ethyl-methyl bad stuff, they dropped it off for our folks to take care of. And I just appreciate this hot, dirty, and sometimes dangerous work, and they did a great job. And I appreciate the police department in handling the traffic out there and our fire department filling up as well and dealing with any hazmat situations that may have occurred. And many other departments, probably, I'm not mentioning everyone that was involved, but it was a, it was a big deal. So thank you to what they did. And then the day we, or last night, you can go on our website, our City of Hoover website, and click on Open Government, Government, and you'll have an opportunity to view our budgets, present and past, our financial reports, an opportunity to look at the bills that we pay, the checks, that is, that we've written to different vendors. And one that I think is probably the most important of all is our capital projects. This will give you an idea of what we've got going on, and it'll even give you a percent completion to let you know where that project stands. So all of these things were public record, but as you know, difficult to, a little difficult to get to. This just makes it very easy for our citizens to look and see exactly what we're doing with their money, and I'm glad to see that, that come online. And then finally, I would ask, we did call for a study on a hotel for a specific piece of property, particularly at the Met, at our center there, to see if there was a feasibility study to see if something of that nature would be warranted. So we got that report back, and I want to ask Mr. Rice if he would kind of give us the details of that.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, as the mayor stated, we got some preliminary results back from the, from CBRE, which is the company the council approved to conduct that study. It was originally proposed as a two-phase study. When they came back at the end of phase one and gave Mr. Knighton and myself a report via conference call, it's apparent to us that the, it would be a challenge for any hotel to be successful there at this point in time. The level of service that they thought was achievable in terms of the star rating that you're familiar with, hotels, would not be very high. It would be a brand that would probably not bring very many amenities. So onsite dining, things like that, wouldn't be an option, in their opinion. And really, anything at this point in history would struggle to be a success there. It just would not attract business travel, which is so vital to the mix of occupancy that a successful hotel needs. It'd probably do very, very well on weekends, as we all could imagine. But Monday through Thursday, just wouldn't see very much census at all in terms of their room count. So after consultation with the mayor, we asked that they suspend and not perform phase two at this point in time, which would need a detailed financial analysis. And so they're just on hold, waiting to hear back from us. But we did want to bring this as an interim update to the council, to let you know what we're hearing thus far. We don't envision, at this point, any recommendation coming forward that we pursue that. We certainly don't want anything that would not be an enhancement to the, to the facility. There could be a day, many years from now, that that would be something that might, we might revisit as a community. But at this point in time, we just don't foresee that as a recommendation coming forward. And I can answer any questions you might have, and then as we get into greater detail, we'll certainly provide you with the written report that we anticipate forthcoming.
Any questions from Mr. Rice?
I know one of the ideas for having something like that there was have more, any space to allow for more convention and breakout things for convention. Was there any analysis done of that was primarily kind of a residential lodging type?
They did, me with Mr. Sparks, and we actually sat in that meeting as well. And they got from him the history of events today and also the bookings going forward. And they did analyze that and did some survey work of some past and future customers to try to ascertain what other business it might draw. They were clear to us in their verbal comments that, from their experience, the ideology should be that a hotel should follow the business and not should be used as a draw for business. And they gave us a couple of examples where they had seen projects not do well when, when the thought process was, we put a hotel there, it'll enhance the business. And, you know, we kind of thought the opposite, but they do it for a living. So that's, that's the value of the feasibility study.
Yeah, and I guess in the advisory committee, we'll have to, there's probably need to talk about that additional space, meeting space, not lodging space, but just because we've been watching as things have grown, some of the hotels, the big meetings, they're in a Finlay Center, but they don't have that breakout section. And so we're risked a loop for some of those. So we can have a detailed discussion on that in the advisory committee.
Well, I totally agree with you, Mr. Shaw. And also, you know, we see some challenges even with some of the tournament-type events that they're hosting now that need operational space for administration, for teams to be waiting for check-in, some of the non-play areas. And the facility just, just wasn't built with a whole lot of that. So that is something we can look at for long-term capital plan.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the new information on the city website, will that include the most recent past cavers as well?
It does have that. Those are all of our financial, we have bond ratings, and it's got all of that information.
Chief Berzus, last year was about a hundred-and-fifty-year-old shotgun. Anything interesting this year on hazardous waste data?
Absolutely.
Boring year, no uranium?
But I will say, I was very pleased that we had about seven-hundred-and-sixty-five pounds of drugs that were dead, payback.
Street drugs are prescribed.
Consider how much the pill weighs, and the opioid problem we have today. It's very, very great to see that many pills per day, so I'm very pleased.
Excellent, thank you, sir. All right, anything else in the council? Anything else in the mayor? Anyone that would like to speak? If y'all would just start to line up against the wall behind Mr. Patterson. I know he usually tries to keep it under forty-five minutes. But don't forget your name and address. And if the line starts to get too long, you may want to wait until...
Two hundred and thirty seconds.
So we'll leave you.
Yes, sir. My name's Jody Patterson. Lived in Hoover almost sixty years. I don't know whether to disagree or what to say about comments made about an emergency road. Two things that came to my mind real quick. We've got three police officers with cars, all the time in Hoover, I ask you, they're down there. Our police are very present, very aware, very good, I think, all the time running around our city. Second point, I've seen a lot of cities that do very inexpensive substations, not a lot of money. Police, rescue, and fire. I'd like for y'all to think about that first. Now, a few quick notes. Last week's school board meeting was very interesting. If you weren't there, you missed the very passionate neighbors of mine expressing with no misunderstanding. Communities of Willow Trace, Haba River Estates will not allow the destruction of our neighborhoods. If you were there, you missed a wonderful, you were not, you were not there. You missed a wonderful, kind, sweet lady who made it very clear that she'll lay down in front of any machine that comes to rip up our cul-de-sac and tear out our trails. I know this lady very well, and I'll tell all four of you, I'd like to tell all seven of you. She's not bluffing. You know how long I've been there in the moment. Maybe our city, maybe we can, we can do a redevelopment plan. I'm just, I'm, I'm for you gentlemen. I think you know, we're way too late for any comprehensive plan. Frank Skinner, William Billingsley, Jack Harrison, and a few others should have done that a long, long, long time ago. Y'all know that. Mayor Bucato knows that, too. Maybe Mayor Skelton, McCollum, Tellis, Ivy, and now Mayor Bucato would have had a whole lot easier just simply making a few adjustments. But we didn't do it. And we go back to the eighties with a lot of this stuff, I promise you. I even worked on a comprehensive plan. I talked with Bob House, city planner today. We worked for countless hours, two thousand two, two thousand three. What happens to those plans that we did? I don't know, we get a new mayor, and they're ditched. They're gone, they're history, no more. At least fifteen, sixteen, seventeen people on this committee worked countless hours on a comprehensive plan then. It's gone, it's ditched. We get a new mayor, it's over. And remember.
Oh, that plan was never voted by your council?
No, sir, never voted at all, never voted on, ditched. I don't know where it is. It's always been the politically correct thing to do. We're going to make a comprehensive plan. That's the thing to do. But destroying a neighborhood has never been on any plan, period. Comprehensive or otherwise, never. I don't know whose idea this cut through Haba River Estates, Willow Trace, and ruined the beautiful trails, the Willow Trace, Park Trace, and Hunter's Creek Baptist Church share. I've told a lot of my friends and neighbors, we need to know what's truly driving these proposals. And I'm not accusing anybody of anything, no wrongdoing, I'm not, I'm not doing any of that, but money. U.S. Steel has had their way in this city for forty to fifty years. U.S. Steel gets a, a little traffic rerouted through our high school, neighborhoods and trails, and out of the parkway, out of that area. Makes it a whole lot easier for them to get more people in their houses. In my opinion, we need to focus our efforts on an exit and entrance. I'd call it number eight, where I get on Interstate most times at ten. Morgan Road's exit six, might be exit eight or exit nine. Focus on that. Widenings, South Shays Crest Road will take a tremendous amount. I know several of my neighbors have written Senator Shelby. Did a little cooperation with Shelby County, Helena, Alabaster, Maylene. Everybody will win on that deal. Whatever happens with the remaining homes in Lake Wilburn and Blackbridge communities happens. Let it be, and let us be. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson, one second. I, I got a couple of questions for you. As a former council member, you served on committees, a lot like what, you served on committees, like the Public Works Committee, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you know that in those committees, a lot of times, those are not fully formed ideas that come out of the committee. So what we heard in the Public Works Committee was not the entirety of a study that we've made. However, we heard that information because we believe in transparency. We believe in getting the information out in front. So while it was not a fully formed idea, we put that out in transparency, in good faith, to people with the understanding of what was said prior to introduction of these ideas by these gentlemen here. These are not fully formed ideas. So we're not planning right now. We have not proposed cutting a road through anything. Now, what we're going to do is we're going to look at the entirety of the property, which means we're going to look at everything from where the trace crossings P U D, such as one fifty, goes out to South Shays Crest, and goes back to Morgan Road. We want, and we have funded a study to look at everything. Because you're right, it's, it's, this is one of the most highly difficult things you could ever do, trying to put a major thoroughfare into a developed area. And you can look at a redevelopment plan, but it doesn't matter which angle you come through. You're impacting somebody with as densely developed as that area is, unless you look at the areas that are yet to be built or in the process of being built, which we would need to do. So that's why we want to look at everything. But what came out of committee, unfortunately, was put out there as a proposed plan. And no, sir, it's not a proposed plan. And it is done because this council realizes that we've got to do something in the area. We've got to look at every option and make a good faith effort to do something in that area based on traffic. What is that? I don't know. I don't think anybody knows right now. I think it's going to be a long time before we know. But the benefit in what we did of putting this out ahead of time and being transparent with what we did have already done is we got feedback. We got feedback that these are not desirable outcomes. So those go on the shelf. And we look at, we look, we go further with the study, and we look at more outcomes and bring them to the people. But we want to get that out ahead of time. We don't want to get a comprehensive study, come to you, and put that out and make it look like, okay, well, the decision's been made. But it hasn't. So I hope that everyone understands that this is, the process is about this long. And we funded a study, we've done, we funded design, all the way through the process of what we're going to do, but we're right here, instead of right here. And we're being as transparent as we can all the way down the line. Please do not think that anything put out is a proposal that is funded and going to be built tomorrow. It is not. It is nothing more than a drawing at this point in time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, I'd just like to ask Mr. Patterson, where did you, where were you given the idea that we were? You, you said to not leave our property alone. We have no intention of moving it this time on your property. I just wondered where you got that? Where you got that? We've never said, as Mr. Fonda said, we've never said we were going, planning on moving ahead. If anything, this was all just ideas?
At the last meeting, I was sitting right here over my regular spot and looked at all the information on four proposals, Mr. Green. And it's, if they're proposed and put up here, it's something that you're looking at pretty seriously. And, and you said to none, Mr. Green, that it, that you, you need a gated, we don't need a gated anything anywhere. We've got police everywhere, we've got, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I respect your opinion.
Yes, sir, I don't think we do.
And I hope you respect mine.
I do, absolutely, sir.
Right.
Thank y'all very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is David Lawson. I live on Tracy Ridge Lane in Willow Trace. And I've just got a couple of quick comments. I mean, obviously, with all the uproars gone on recently, everybody knows that not a lot of people are really happy about this road issue. And so what I, what I would like the council to consider is, you know, I understand there's the safety issue, getting police in and out of Hoover High School. When you look at the issue of where are the police located? Hoover developed up and down thirty-one. All the police assets are up and down thirty-one. Hoover's developing out west. Why not take, or why not consider taking all these millions of dollars and building a significant police presence out there? I'm not talking about a little substation with a couple of police officers. I'm talking about a big administration building that has police.
Lawson, if I could interrupt. Police assets strategically placed throughout the city at any given time.
Okay.
Buildings, it's not like fire stations where you house a fire truck and they're not out handling daily, daily responsibilities like hydrants or inspections, various things. They wait there and, and train there and work on apparatus there. The police department is out in the community. Administrative buildings don't protect anybody.
No, I, I'm talking about a, a place where there is a significant police presence of, not administrative-type things, of police presence, fire presence, out there by the Met, out there by the schools. There's this gigantic parking lot between the Met and the soccer fields. It'd be a perfect place to put them. And if the concern is, how do the police get to the school? Can they get there quickly? If there is a significant police presence with assets, the type of assets you're talking about there, you don't have a traffic issue. And so that, that's the one thing I'd just like to, to, to consider is, is that. Instead of building roads so the police can get there, move assets to where growth is. It's, it's, it's supply chain management business, it's a forward operating base in the military. You move on where they're needed. So that, that's my one comment. The second comment I have is, in, in response to what Mr. Patterson was talking about and the council saying, well, this is just something new, this isn't proposed, this is not something we're acting on. Anybody who owns a house in Willow Trace or the Haba River Estates right now, if they want to go put their house on the market, okay, today, hanging over their heads is this proposal that is just at an initial stage. We don't know what's going to happen, if anything's going to happen. And so the people who live in these communities, you, you have, they have this all hanging over their heads right now. If I wanted to go sell my house right now, somebody picks up, well, pick up the Hoover Sun. Somebody moving from out of town. Oh, okay, well, there's some proposal to perhaps build a road through Willow Trace. I don't want to, but I forget it.
That's the whole of the council's.
Well, it, it's, it's, it's the city considering putting a road through there. So that's all I have to say.
As far as, as far as public safety, Mr. Patterson already talked about there being three SROs at Hoover High School.
Apparently, that's not enough for councilman Green to say safety is the biggest issue.
There are, and the next fire station that's to be built is going to be built in that vicinity and will be paid for by Signature Homes. That apparatus is already in service at Station Six. So all they need is a place to call home, and that's kind of the city. Well, but here again, the council, what the council did in the last budget, we asked to place five hundred thousand dollars in the budget for studies, to determine a study, to determine information. It was not for that, any more than that. The council has not budgeted anything. The council had not heard anything from the administration to point, and thus is why Mr. Green and the Public Works Committee asked for an update. The council found out the same night that everybody else did what the administrat-- oh, you don't think that's true? Come on down. Come on down ahead of Mr. Mr. Singer.
Mr. President, I can address where there might be confusion there.
Yes, sir.
Several times it's come up. During the comprehensive planning process, which is still ensconced in planning and zoning, in the comprehensive plan draft, there were two controversial roads that were not even, they were kind of aligned. One was the fire road, or the formerly known as the fire road, going outside, from Ross Bridge to Left Park. And the other one was aligned that connected through Haba River Estates. Those were, those were in the comprehensive plan, I guess, the draft, maybe three months ago, something like that must have been. And so people found out about that and get a lot of feedback, and those were very quickly removed. That's not part of the comprehensive plan. So I think that's where some of the confusion might be on, on where, where that came from. And if I might just elaborate on that a little bit. Just to be clear, I mean, this, we came to a meeting and saw a PowerPoint. That was the first time we'd ever seen it. And my first question was, I think this is a little more limited in scope than we've, we've been looking for. And the second discussion was, well, does that go through the school's property? And do we know anything about that yet? And there was still preliminary, no answer on that. And so it's been planning and zoning meeting, we had a lot of folks show up for that just because there had been some discussion in the past, and I think we had a really good meeting. And, and just to be clear, when I saw those, those proposals, I wasn't a fan of any of those. That's what I'm saying. And, and so it bothers me a little bit, the whatever process that we're using from the last couple of years when we first really started working on this, the U D Amendment, it's, it's generating more confusion and more concern than it's solving. So Mr. Foster, I agree, we need transparency, but I would favor a, I, I do think, Mr. Patterson said, that it's too late for comprehensive plan. I think that planning, master planning, comprehensive planning is frequently done for redevelopment, frequently done to address situations where we don't have a, a, a good solution. We come up with the best solution. Mr. Martin, is that, would that be true? But there are plenty of plans. If you look, Auburn, or Ogleika, or Tuscaloosa, to be fair, Huntsville has always plans to go back and retrofit things. What I would favor is, one thing that's clearly missing all of this is, is two things. One, we as a council have got to decide what we're looking for. I don't, I think we made a lot of assumptions when we authorized that money. I think since the U D Amendment in two thousand seven, seventeen, we assume we're all on the same page, but I don't think we are yet. Is it a public safety access fire road? Is it another access to South Shays Crest? Is it one, what, what are we talking about here? I think, and we as a council, we decide what our high-level goals for this process are. They're kind of all over the place. Second thing, the biggest thing I think is missing is public input on the front end. You know, this kind of what became a black box, the city engineers worked on it, the mayor's staff worked on it, and then ta-da, we, we saw it in this presentation. I think we need to have a series of public meetings, just like we would for any master plan and, and comprehensive plan, and, and understand what the concerns of the public are and understand what, what the ideas of the public are. I mean, a lot of folks here drive these roads every day, and I've heard so many good suggestions over the last two or three weeks. Some of them might work, some of them might not be. I think we need to get all those in Haba, or hand those to the engineers who are doing this study and make sure that we have an answer for each one of those. I mean, it pains me to get an answer, get a question of, why didn't we consider X, Y, Z? I was like, I don't know, could we consider that? And I'll go to Mr. Westover, and there's a good answer for why we didn't, or it's, it's still in the works, or whatever. So the first thing I think we need is, we need to get on the same page as a council. I think we need to get public input on, on what, where we're going with this. And I think we need to very quickly start putting, or maybe right after we finish the comp plan, which has come along very nicely. We spent a lot of hours in mini meetings, and I think we're, we're going to have something pretty quick. Maybe we roll right into a master plan for a, a traffic master plan for the trace crossings area. And let's get rid of some of this uncertainty and some of this, I mean, I, I, that might fear I've seen in people's eyes, because this is where people live, it's where they go to church, it's where their kids go to school. We, we've got to get some clarity in this process, because even though the process has been well-intentioned, I, I think we've caused more harm than good at this point. I think we need to get our act together and come up with a plan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Singer?
Arnold Singer, six thirteen, Rivette Place. I was here when the plan was presented. I was also with the Board of Education when it was presented, because I wanted to understand the day and what it didn't do. Because I wanted to understand the day and what it didn't do. I took my usual analytical approach, helicoptered over the area in my, in my mind. And I identified what I think is that this bottleneck. Called the intersection of Trace Cross, Stadium Trace Parkway and one fifty. Recently, we had three left lanes beautifully laid out. We have the entrance onto four fifty-nine, much smoother going toward McCalla. This was funded by the developer of Stadium Trace Village. But the thing is, it represents a Band-Aid. In my opinion, it's important to take a real good look at what that intersection is. From each of the four directions, there is always a right turn available. So that, that takes care of that problem. What you have is the, is the problem, not enough vehicles getting through to make the left turn from Stadium Trace onto one fifty. The solution that I would suggest would be an L-shaped flyover that would provide the equivalent of a constant green for a left turn. Now think about that a moment. All of that traffic, a two-lane going in one direction, going over the traffic, always being available, that eliminates that problem. If you do the same thing coming from Preserve Parkway for the left turn onto one fifty coming in this direction, then the three, the four traffic patterns would only be three traffic patterns, allowing even more time for left turn from one fifty onto Stadium Trace Parkway or traffic going right and left on one fifty as well as on Stadium Trace and Preserve Parkway. This does not impact any residential properties. The room is there. I'm not an engineer, so I don't have a detailed plan, but I'm giving you some food across the public discussion for alternatives. Thank you.
Mr. Singer, real quick, flyover that you mentioned, where? And your guess might merge with existing traffic on how we want to.
There, there are a couple of approaches that can be taken, okay? One is that it comes up and over, makes the left turn, and then splits farther going to one fifty headed toward this area. The other part to go under four fifty-nine. That's just my concept. The practicality of it, I don't know, but certainly the timeframe for this should be a lot less than getting a brand-new interchange for South Shades Crest onto, onto four fifty-nine. If I recall correctly, that was gonna be in the area of ten, twelve years if we were lucky. Now, this would involve dealing with the county, dealing with the state, but I think we'd be dealing with a smaller timeframe. And I think it, it represents these single biggest things that we could do to alleviate traffic in that whole trace crossing area.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, amen.
I can read this book as well.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Christie Franco, and I live in Willow Trace. I live on Trace Crossings Trail at the very end on the right. Yes, right where the trail begins and right where y'all were wanting to get the road. I have lived here since November of nineteen ninety-five. Other than my parents' death, this probably has been the most devastating thing that has ever happened to me. Yes, it is devastating if it takes place. I moved here in good faith, never dreaming in a million years that anything like this could ever be a possibility. Willow Trace is a quiet neighborhood. The cul-de-sac is a wonderful thing, the children can play in it. People and their animals can walk the trails. You can get on your golf cart and ride the trails too. You can see beautiful wildlife, deer, fox, rabbits. This is why we built here, because of all the wonderful things. All of these things is what everybody in Willow Trace loves about it, and of course, the swimming pool. If something like this were to happen, it would dramatically change everything. The homes in Willow Trace are very nice. If this were to happen, the traffic would be horrible. We wouldn't just get the high school traffic, we would get it from everywhere. The roads around here were not designed for this and would be a huge safety problem. All those high school students would definitely speed through here. And of course, throwing out the windows, there's cigarettes, beer cans, potato chip bags, and everything else. And of course, you can rest assured, the city would want to put up speed bumps, which are horrible and destroy property badly too. The whole thing is absolutely ridiculous. And of course, we would start having break-ins too. Be honest, would any of you want this in your neighborhood? Well, of course not. Would you buy a house in this neighborhood when it is like Grand Central Station? Well, of course not. The noise level alone would be devastating. Loud music, a lot of lights at night from cars, because it would go on all night. Please don't forget when there are special events going on at the high school or the Hoover Met, it wouldn't be three thousand cars, it would be more like six thousand. I'm a realist, I know how it will be, and all of you know that it's the truth. You know what I can guarantee to be a hundred percent? That none of you city council people live in Willow Trace. I guarantee you that. You know how I know that? Because none of you would dream of doing this to yourself. And you know what else I can guarantee a hundred percent? That none of you have a loved one that lives in Willow Trace, because you wouldn't do that to them either. I mean, really, are you kidding me? Three thousand fifty cars a day destroying two hundred and four homes? All of this is cruel to me, nothing but cruel. I couldn't do something this cruel to my worst enemy. But when a neighbor is on the trail and calls into the police station to report an abandoned bicycle, and the person at the other end says, oh, yes, you are where they are, where they are painting and putting in that new road, it makes you wonder, is this a done deal? I mean, you just can't help but wonder that. And I do know that there is got, for certainty, there's got to be a better option. Money needs to be put towards this. It doesn't need a Band-Aid. Willow Trace by far affects more homes, driveways, and people's lives than anything. Thank you.
I didn't understand what Mr. Posey said before when, when Mr. Green asked for a report to the Public Works Committee, which was the appropriate thing to do. It was nothing more than a request for information from the administration and two members of senior administration staff came and gave that. There has been no funding, and at this point, we're just as unhappy with it as y'all are.
I will say, there has been five hundred thousand dollars put toward this study. So there's been ample amount of money put toward finding this solution.
I, I just don't know when the nightmares gonna end. I can't sleep, I wake up, it's the first thing I think about when I go bed, it's the first thing I think. And the other day, I was so excited when, when, and I recorded it, when the mayor said he was against all this and I thought, oh, my word, this is, this is beyond wonderful. Then I learned that what the mayor thinks or says doesn't, or it's been told to me, doesn't mean anything. It's what y'all decided. That's what, that's what I've been told.
So you, you don't believe that we, Mike just sat here and said that he doesn't like any of the plans. I don't care for any of the plans, and I said in the paper that we need to go back and we need to sit down and clarify the scope of work with our vendor.
Well, please, please, I thank y'all. Please, please, end this nightmare for us. I thank you. I mean, I feel like I can't even believe it.
I don't understand how we can, we have, we have an ongoing study. And right now, we're talking about four plans that we've, we've sat here and all this said and shelved. We've still got this other study to go on, so is there gonna be concern all the way through the study? It may take years, or?
Well, I know how things go, it's, it's, it's here today and done and finished tomorrow.
There's no way for that to be done.
Well, but somebody said a year or two. For me, a year or two is nothing. That's nothing to me. I mean, the older you get, and, you know, and to me, it's a shame, you know, life is short. Y'all, we're at the age now, you're not, but some of us, life is short. Why do we want this burden on us like this? This is a horrible thing that has been dealt to Willow Trace. It, it, it is a horrible thing. Please end it. I would love to be able to be happy and live again. This is just, it's like a cancer. It's like you're waiting, the phone's gonna ring, you know, has it sprained? What, you know, it is that type thing. Please.
Ma'am, please take my word as president of the city council that nothing will come to occur without support of the community. Nothing.
But nobody in our community's gonna support this, not only me.
I'm saying, whatever, we're gonna come to y'all asking, what do y'all want? What do y'all like? It may be that nobody any longer supports any type of roadway.
Oh, I know. I don't know, all I know is, for my heart, please make it go away.
It's, it's gone away, ma'am. It never arrived, and there, it never arrived.
Oh, y'all aren't thinking on doing this down there?
Not, not, not even within this foreseeable future. We're getting plans together to look at possible ways out. We have not proposed anything, doing anything through any neighborhood at all.
The, the way this works is, we fund the study. We authorize the mayor's staff to do the study. They present something to us and we, they recommend it or don't recommend it. We may have some input here and there, but then we approve what's presented to us. And what we saw was a very early version of, of what had been done so far. So that, that's where, so the mayor coming out against this is pretty significant because it's his staff that are gonna be presenting things to us. But that's where some of the confusion may be.
It doesn't matter what he says or thinks.
It does, because the council cannot sign contracts. We can authorize the mayor to sign contracts, and then it's up to him whether he's going to or not.
Well, can I ask this quick question? Who has the most power? Y'all? Or the mayor? Everybody tells me the chairman.
The council controls the checkbook. If we don't fund it, it can't happen.
But my, I guess my question is, if the mayor says absolutely not, we're not going through Willow Trace or any of it, can y'all say, oh, yes, we are, and do it?
No.
Oh, well, that's wonderful news.
Thank you.
That's wonderful news. I, I, you know, I just want it to go away. It's, it's one of our worst nightmares. Just, I want it to go away. That's, that's the only way I know by the please.
Ma'am, please, sleepy.
Please make it go away.
It's never arrived to go away. I think this is because something was misconstrued and then it got printed in the press, it was talked about on television, and it grew its own legs.
So, so you're telling me tonight, I'm, it's, it's good feeling. Are you telling me a hundred percent Willow Trace and these other people that are suffering too, that, that this nightmare will not come true? I, I want to hear it, and that way I can rest.
Not without the appreciation of the community.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question.
Willow Trace, Park Trace, yeah, Creek, you know, all trace crossings. If trace crossings is not for it, it's, it's not going to exist. Amen.
Well, I, I hope so, because if anybody's for it, they need to go to racing neurology. My husband is psychiatry neurology. They need their head examined. If anybody that--
Psychiatry and neurology?
Yes, so if anybody's for this crazy sick plan, please, you know, I can make an appointment. Anybody that's for it, and you can go to his office, and he'll, he'll give you psychiatric treatment. Because this is the sickest thing yet.
I might need to go to neurology. I don't know.
Well, the, the, the plan even that it just, just, just out there for a second, it's sick beyond sick. I mean, I, I just don't know any other way to put it.
Can I ask you a question? Did, did you, did you think, when you saw this in the paper, this was a done deal? That the city would not have a public hearing or anything?
So it didn't, for me, it didn't matter if it was a done deal. The only thing that mattered is that it was out there at all for, for, for just the treatment option. It, it was devastating to me and everybody in my neighborhood, you know. And even, let me repeat it for the last time, anybody that could bid for something this sick, like I say, please come on down there, I can get you some, some psychiatric paperwork. I'll make you a point.
In that committee, in that committee meeting, the council did not ask what should be said. We were just, we were just asked for information, and that committee met, and I sat in the back. I'm not on the committee, I sat in the back and listened, but we did not the generation that was given to that committee. It was, it was within the administration. And I think that, that had things, had the opportunity to do over again, and maybe it was presented a different way.
Well, please, the power, I think, is in our system. Please make it go away.
Well, I appreciate you, ma'am.
Please make it go away.
It's gone, it never got here.
Okay, thank you.
Please cover your face.
My, my presentation was short. I'm Mark Pennati, I'm also Willow Trace, and I've been working with a lot, I've been with twenty-seven years as well, leading in Willow Trace subdivision, that's one of the original borough shores. And, you know, last night, I met with a hundred and fifty of our neighbors and residents at the pool in our pavilion. We talked about this and our, what are we gonna do, how are we gonna solve the problems? And you guys, and, and we appreciate all the open dialogue we've had. We've numerous times with Mike and his team and planning and zoning folks as well, you know, talking through this, raising our concerns. We went to the school board, raised our concerns. We know their, their concerns with the safety of all the kids. We had, we all have kids that went to the school and all the athletic fields that they have to cross over, bucking your drive to get there, hundreds of kids every day from gym classes to, you name it, you guys know it. Tennis sports and everything else. The safety factor there would be detrimental to them, just like it would be detrimental to us. And when that presentation was made, and it was done earlier on, I did see the Kahava Heights residents stand up and they saw theirs as the number one alternative to, to put it on, and obviously, they went berserk. What are you gonna do, go through my quiet neighborhood? And then conversely, ours became the number one in the last presentation. But there was, you know, just, Mr. Posey, just to your point, there were five present, five, five out of twenty, it was whittled down to. Five out of twenty went through one of our neighborhoods. So that's why there's concern. When you take twenty and you whittle it down to five and said, these are what we're now looking at, we're pricing, we're costing it out, and we're gonna go ahead and make this our opinion. But maybe to you, we don't know that. That's what we saw, okay? And that's what we heard, that's what was printed in the paper, that's what was presented at the state council meeting. So with that said, you know, we have to look at and say, look, there's a, there's a strong possibility it could happen. Ours was public cheapest, why? Because there's a bridge right there. Will they use eminent domain to take our property? Yes, that's our property at the end, okay? It's owned by association. You know, we can do that. We enforce the school board, they're not here right now, maybe a lot of, but the school board.
Two, two members are still.
You know, will they challenge them, put pressure on them to also give the, the access to that property to, to the city council and to the city? We don't know that. We hope, you know, cooler heads prevail, smarter heads prevail on that, and look for alternatives. What we gotta do is really think through and, and ask, was the traffic study done? We heard at the, at the school board meeting, there was never a traffic study done. I asked twice in the planning and zoning meeting, it's kinda led to believe the data was there. But the traffic study was never done to determine what is the root cause of the backups. You heard some conversation about what some people's thoughts are. I guarantee you, if you guys live there, you can all tell us what they are. I know what they are. And it's, you know, dumping out the school and our, our road is not going to solve the, the traffic jams that you see on Stadium Trace Parkway, they'll never happen. Okay, I've done a lot of traffic studies in my past, been involved in them, and I've looked at the data and I've hired it. I'm telling you right now, you guys been digging a little deeper. I'm telling you right now, you guys better dig in a little deeper and understand what's causing the traffic. I'm not gonna tell you what you need to do, but you need to, to figure it out, use a little more intelligence than what we're doing, that's all we're asking you to do. This is not gonna solve the problem. Back to us, our community, that's what we're concerned about, Kahaba Heights is working with us, Park Trace is working with us, we don't want to destroy our communities, as you heard. You know, this brochure, original brochure, talked about the homes, the buildings, it's a, it's a sales marketing tool, right? Back in, you know, started back almost thirty years ago, the city of Hoover and US Steel, and we're gonna, we're gonna think about building this, land development, the school's gonna go there, we have the Hoover Met going there, the Galleria's down the road, you know, all this going on thirty years ago, that came to fruition of, of really one of the first planned communities of this, of this type, with the sidewalks and what have you. And it goes on there and tells us, don't worry about it, it says right in here, your, your neighborhood enhanced by the covenants. And we know covenants. Ensure the lasting character of our neighborhood, you might as well throw this away, because you're telling us, if you do this, the promises that were made by the city and US Steel when we bought our homes, didn't mean anything. Don't take care of us about the covenants, okay? That's what I'm saying. We do want our, because our character of the neighborhood, character of Bob Ruver Estates, character of Park Trace, would be torn apart, wouldn't be close to what it is today. So that's what we're asking for you to think, reconsider, you know, and, and if we can help, we'll help, but reality of it is, we want to voice our concern, get in front of it, I don't want, none of us want to be on the back end of it, and some of us are decided because some things got swept in, talked about, and pushed through, and I know you're not gonna do this, everybody's saying they're way ahead of it, and I know you are, some point you have to do it. Don't waste money on things, you know, you're gonna have legal challenges and other challenges against you, I'm gonna tell you right now. Make sure we all work together and look for smarter alternatives than the ones being presented, out of the five that's been presented today. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Sir, please understand that if we were to reconsider, that would mean we would have to consider doing it, because right now, there is no consideration to any.
Well, it's a good problem.
Thank you. It's out there somewhere. Sir, would you like to come down and speak? Put mine here, put it.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice, to clarify this whole thing. Study is still ongoing, what was presented, was a viable alternative, but there's a lot more property there for consideration and for other ways in and out of there.
Yes, sir, and I wanted to, and I know, I know you knew exactly what you were saying, but I think sometimes the, the audience can hear something a little different, I wanted to revisit one quick thing. The five hundred thousand that was budgeted, um, and you all know this, this is for the benefit of the public, the five hundred thousand that was budgeted in this current fiscal year was for the type of work that's being done now, which is very eighty thousand foot level, uh, for ultimate route selection and for road design. So I just wanna clarify for everybody's purposes, that five hundred thousand has not been spent on those four options, or even on those twenty options that have been referred to, that's just a very small component of what that money is intended to fund. That, that money would hopefully design the ultimate trace crossing road wherever it would land. Um, so, yes, sir, there's a, I mean, there's a world of options out there. One of the things that I keep hearing the word plans, and we have this plan to do this, and I think you all have said it, and I'll just reiterate it, there's never been a plan. There's been some engineering studies, and this is no disrespect, it's a fine firm that's based in Hoover and does a tremendous amount of work all over the place, uh, and so it's not any disrespect to their professional engineers, but this is just people looking at aerial maps saying, here's where a connection could go, here's where a connection could go. That's being done in isolation of any impact that it would have, environmental or quality of life or anything else, because they're just not to that stage yet. Um, somebody the other day was asking me, well, why didn't y'all, you know, do this, and why didn't you do that? And I said, well, have you attended your own funeral yet? I said, well, no, I said, because it's not time, right? So the, all of these things that are being suggested are logical, and they all have a place in the process, but we're so early in this process. And I understand that's, that's hard to glean sometimes, and I, I said at the end of our planning and zoning meeting the other night, that Mr. Anderson did nothing but his job, which was to cover the conversation in a public meeting. Um, it, people got confused, I get it, he didn't do anything wrong. I don't think the wrong information was presented in that meeting. I think the chairman of the committee asked for an update, we provided an update for the work that was done up to that point, but I know it's hard to put that in context, and particularly when that's your neighborhood that you see in those pictures, in the Hoover Sun or on the website, um, that's, that's difficult to communicate all that. So, uh, don't fault the council for asking for an update, I think that's wise stewardship of the money that you've allocated. I don't fault Mr. Anderson for covering the proceedings of a public meeting, because that's his job. And I don't fault the residents for a, a heightened level of anxiety for what they believe that they saw, but I do think that they need to listen when you all are telling them, when the mayor's telling them, these are lines on page, these are not plans, you know, I think we've tried to communicate that, uh, but to your question, there are many, many, many different options out there. We're way at the beginning of this process, nowhere near the end, and I think I said at the Board of Education the other night, there are no bulldozers gassed up, and there are no dump trucks loaded with asphalt ready to swoop into a neighborhood and inflict a road upon them, and we're so far ahead of that, I don't know how to communicate that anymore, sir. Is that, did I get to the question and all that? Okay.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Knowing that the mayor.
He left, he had to leave. I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Rice had to.
Yes.
Um, knowing that the mayor was in opposition of all those that were presented, why do they need to be presented to the school?
Okay, so the school board meeting was on Monday night, and we had gone to Dr. Murphy, was it Tuesday night? I'm sorry, Tuesday night. We had gone to Dr. Murphy, probably him a month ago, five weeks ago, had a meeting with her and said, hey, this is, all this preliminary work is out there, the options that look even remotely economically viable, would all basically connect Buccaneer. So please be considering that, be having conversations with your board, you know, that's a tremendous step to, to connect that road. So she asked if we could come back on Tuesday and make a more formal presentation based on the coverage that had come out after the committee meeting, so of course, we're gonna, we're gonna do that. Uh, I don't know, and I'll certainly not speak for the mayor, I don't know that, um, that the mayor's comments on Thursday were formulated until he heard the public feedback. So he certainly did not send us forward, it's not my perception that he sent us out to propose something that he knew he didn't, didn't support. I think the public feedback, much of which came at that board meeting, um, and of course, I, you know, shared with him everything that we heard there that night, I think that informed his opinion, and I'll defer to, to anything that he wants to say, but I, I can assure you, I never had a feeling we were presenting anything that had any, um, endorsement or lack of endorsement. It was just, this is what they've given us so far from the engineering firm, here's the update, and I think the confusion set in from there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything to say? Anything else from the council? Anything from the mayor? Yes, sir? Oh, just come down and get your name and address.
My name is Paul Brasswell, thirty in the eight, Gables Drive, Hoover, Alabama. Abraham Lincoln said a hundred and fifty years ago that the sheerest way to do a failure is try to please everybody who can't. And I know these people up here may not agree with them, but they're trying to do a good job, it's a difficult one. Many moving parts trying to get the traffic situation around here straightened out, and I think they're trying to do the best. They're not intentional, they're trying to hurt anybody, just trying to figure out the best way to do it. So give them a chance, it'll work for you, I promise you, and I believe them. But let's just hope we're together, okay? Any heads? That we can come up with a good solution. I promise you, they're not trying to hurt anybody, they're trying to help us. So, let's give them a chance, and we'll come up with a good idea. Do it out here. Now, what do we have to say? This is just one last thing. Uh, I do think that what Jody Patterson said about widening the South Shades Crest Road, I think that that's a good idea, I think it helps them. Uh, but, Jody, I have to say, this is kind of out of thought, but when you said, change it from coming out of Willa Trace, coming out to South Shades Crest, you do understand that you are saving Willa Trace, you understand that, that's a good thing, but you're putting it back over to South Shades Crest, and you're forgetting there's about ten subdivisions that pit on that road, so I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you're taking one to another, I mean, that's all I'm saying. But I, I agree with you, we, we need, we need help with our traffic, there's no doubt, and these guys are trying to come up with it. So, let's just work with them, just go with ideas, the plans, disagreements, my disagreements and my agreements. But I do agree with on the, uh, South Shades Crest Road, widening, at one specific place of, we'll get off, I already got one, a little south on South Shades Crest Road, I've been done it a million times, and then we'll, we'll back up for about a while, maybe two. You just take that right entrance, where it doesn't even turn to you, right up on it, a little right entrance there, maybe come back up, and you let those people go, I don't know, so just. It'll be five, thirty yards long. That's my suggestion. So, anyway, I haven't heard a nice feeling, just trying to come up with an idea.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Um, once again, yes, ma'am, well, usually you only get one bite at the apple.
I know.
Tell you what, why don't you have, if you guys have something to talk about, come talk to us once we're done, okay?
Do what?
You can come up and talk to us once we're done, okay?
Oh, once you're done, oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am, and just believe it, please, sir. Anything else, return. Come on down.